This recording.
Microphone's on.
So if it's all right with you guys, I'll just go ahead and call this thing to order, okay?
Well, do you want to gavel?
No. Call the work session to order for May 28th at one...let's call it 1:10.
May 29th.
Pardon?
The 29th.
No, it is the 29th. Glad I got my glasses. Uh, roll call. We got Pete Larue, Dave Wigan, John Marks.
Present. Paul.
Dan?
Present.
Present. Public comment, we have none. Policy discussion is, uh, water and wastewater asset management program. You're up.
Okay, board has been concerned asking questions about where we are with regard to the development of the asset management programs for the water and the wastewater utilities. The concern is to ensure to have some information prior to the commencement of the public hearing meetings for the 2020 budget to be able to address needs of public works.
And I'm probably just speaking for myself, but it was my understanding that the water asset management program should be, I think it was already submitted to DEQ?
Correct.
But I understand that it's not done yet?
It's not 100% complete, no.
And the sewer and the wastewater was just started working on when? Middle of last year?
Uh, probably, yeah, or a little bit earlier, but yeah.
So I guess everybody's concurrence, it would be interesting to see where we're at with water.
I asked Kirk and Isaac, who have been working on the project, to come in basically to answer questions. And the, my understanding at this point is that the water was submitted to DEQ and we're waiting their response back. And the wastewater data has been submitted to StanTech. And again, we're waiting for their response back from receiving that information. And there are engineers in that process to be establishing the next steps. So I've been always Kirk and Isaac, since they've been working on it, to get away.
Kirk, do you want to provide background on how the water came to be?
I guess to assist the board, I guess what I would like to have, have you guys do is kind of like start at the beginning, what the projects were about, when they were commenced, what some middles we've made and what we're waiting for from outside agencies before we can wrap it up. And as I understand it, the whole thing has to be submitted by November of this year.
End of November, correct.
End of November. Okay, so with that, why don't you just kind of walk the board members through where we've been, where we're at, and where we need to be by November.
The whole thing being water, or the whole thing being water and wastewater?
Those are two different things. Surely start with the water?
Well, I mean, the whole, he said the whole thing had to be submitted by November. Is that the whole thing as in water, or the whole thing as in wastewater?
Wastewater.
Okay.
So in other words, we got a grant for the wastewater portion.
Yep. Okay, go ahead.
For the water, there was no grant available. In fact, it wasn't even publicized by the DEQ at all. I first heard about it.
Why don't you get up there and turn the mic on? Have we got a mic?
Not here.
Really shouldn't it was, is when we had concessions, have a table up there in the set on instead of going up by the mic. Have the mic right at the table.
Correct, yeah.
It works so much better.
Yeah, good at this table.
Put that over there, they can both sit on there and they can just, you know, I think you end up with a better conversation.
Yep, working. So the, I believe it was the Safe Drinking Water Act actually added the, for the water, the asset management requirement as of January 1st, 2018, I believe. It wasn't really discussed at the meetings or publicized at all until pretty late in the year. Actually, I heard about it, I was in Lansing for a rate development, water rate development workshop. And the last day, instructors cast the room, and there were people from all over the state there, mostly downstate, if they were aware that it was an asset management requirement for water. And nobody in the room knew that. So anyway, shortly after that, it started being discussed at, you know, meetings with the DEQ. So, uh, so we started doing it, and basically, it, the process was pretty much the same, only like I said, we did not get the grant. So in other words, we had purchased a data collector, which actually was half paid for by the SAW grant, an annual data collector. And then we also, along with software, and then we got a couple of licenses for RTIS, like current licenses. And then we also got a, basically it's an operation and maintenance software. And then we got a couple of field tablets to go with that. So the way, the whole system worked was you collect the data, and then the data basically has to be uploaded into, end up getting a, an online version of RTIS. I was originally going to go with a server version, but that was more costly. Plus, you know, online is the more common method of storing the data.
Kirk, when you started this, you said, you mentioned something about a SAW grant that got you going on that, but then you said the SAW grant didn't have anything to do with the water that was sewer.
Right, right. So if I'm buying equipment such as a data collector, and software, and field tablets, that sort of stuff, it's going to be used for both.
Okay.
So half of it was paid for, and actually the grant is for 90% of the cost, so.
Kirk, did, when the DEQ started this for the water, the water quality, or safe drinking water quality, did they provide any guidelines or any kind of a program to follow them? Was there any kind of?
Well, not initially, that's what I'm saying. It wasn't until basically that last year where suddenly, you know, it was discussed at meetings, there were, you know, DEQ workshops, that sort of thing. So, and actually, the SAW grant program was advertised way more. And that was initially, it's not required in wastewater, but it was initially developed for basically treatment plans. But, and we are part owners of a treatment plan. So that actually goes into, if you haven't established approved AMP plan, approved by the state, then if you apply for any funding for any projects, then your treatment plan, not only do you have to have AMP management for that, AMP plan for that, but you also have to have, it actually goes in their permit, for example. So in other words, they've all got discharge permits that list all kinds of stuff, including asset management. So it's mostly substances that they have to remove from wastewater, but they've also added in their actual permit, they have to have an AMP. So the idea of, well, y'all know what asset management is, so I won't go further than that. But back to water, which is a thing we've been working on initially. So they just started having workshops, and the, you know, the due date was discussed. But we're coming down to the wire, and actually, I and Kurt Goodman from the City Market, Goodman was in charge of the city water and wastewater asset management programs. We actually had a meeting with the DEQ and told them what we were doing. And we're basically, we're doing the same thing, using the same methods of developing these programs. Obviously, theirs is much larger. So in other words, they're buying more equipment, you know, more software, more consultants, more of everything. So their grant is for like $2 million. And plus have a larger staff. But in any rate, we're basically at the same stage of completion. So we met with the DEQ in, I believe it's November. And in fact, we met with three people at the DEQ and discussed where we were, what we were doing. And they basically said, well, you know, it sounds great, you know, that's what we're looking for. So then the deadline came and went. And we did make this settle prior to the end of the year. And actually, the 31st, I believe, was actually on a holiday, so I didn't know, but there was another program that was due earlier in December. And so I hand delivered it because the DEQ's only a few blocks away. And there's a posting on the door about this office observes state holidays, okay, which that deadline was also on a state holiday. Except, I had no idea what the state holidays were, so I looked on the website, took me forever, not forever, 15, 20 minutes, finding what the state holidays were. Then I realized, okay, 31st is also a holiday, so anyway, I made up for the deadline. But as an insurance policy, I also emailed everything to the DEQ.
So on the water?
And so on the water, in my memo, I did say, we haven't heard anything, but, and we haven't officially. I did hear that they have started writing letters to communities. And there are lots of communities that didn't submit anything, because they, you know, even though it's required, if they're not getting money to do it, it's like, okay. So that's what's that is.
So bottom line is with the water, we met the deadline and submitted.
Right.
Okay, but the board does not see any of those submitted, so probably be a good idea to, if you have an electronic, I think you submitted, maybe forward a copy to the board members.
Well, that's what they're looking at right now.
Okay.
This is what was submitted.
This is, this is the spreadsheets are what was submitted to DEQ for the water?
Yes, everything except the very first memo, which is about the...
Yeah, now what's the DEQ going to do with what's been submitted?
Well, that's a question. I suspect they're going to, at some point, like I said, they're only aggressive with people that have no response at all. So not only did they miss the deadline, and I, all the years I worked for DEQ, that's one thing I learned. The most important thing with DEQ is meet a deadline. It doesn't matter if you're, what you're submitting is incomplete, incorrect, if you meet the deadline, then...
You're all right.
You're, you're good.
So as it sits?
Now, of course, we strive to make it complete, and, you know, their agreement has to be done. As it will.
So as it sits right now, the DEQ has received our data, basically, but we don't have necessarily an asset management plan for, say, in hand at this point.
I guess I would ask, what data have they received? Because I looked at these spreadsheets, the last half of the spreadsheets, I don't see any data.
Right, it's basically just the inventory. So there's...
But I don't see any installation dates, any, when it was installed?
Right, that's the part that's not done, right.
Okay, and then that has to be completed by when? The water, the rest of this data?
There is no, that's what I'm saying, there's no, in terms of the DEQ.
Right.
The only comment, written comment, which was actually in the, they get an annual system review, where they go on site, they look at your operations, they look at your records, and was, the only thing they said concerning the water asset management plan is, we need a 20-year CIP, not, you know, the four or five-year warranty that the township does.
Okay, just, if I can just interrupt for a minute, and you guys jump in if you want. I'm not sure the board was looking for all of this information. If I recall correctly, when, when I got on the board in the end of 2016, we were headed for an asset management program then, and all the board was looking for was the dates that, and primarily the mains, when they were installed, what their life expectancy was. And I'm sure you remember the big debate on life expectancy.
Right.
And what is the forecast date that they're going to have to be replaced?
Yep.
And at what cost, so that we can start budgeting money for that and putting it away, so that when it comes time to replace those, we don't have to go out and look for a loan at 4% or 5% interest, that we've got a big chunk of that money in hand. But I don't see where any of this provides any of that information.
No, it doesn't. So that has to be completed yet.
Go ahead, John.
Basically, I think the board is unaccustomed as they are to looking at a lot of this stuff. They just wanted to know the dates, and wanted to work from the dates towards having some preliminary information so that we could put it into the budget, what was needed if it was possible.
Right, and you remember where all this started, was with the road rehab project?
Yeah.
And we were talking about replacing a bunch, a bunch of water mains when we were doing the road, because we're going to have the road tore up anyway. And then that's when we got into the discussion about replacing things that we weren't sure even had to be replaced. And if I remember right, the cost was $4 million?
Yeah, three something, yeah.
Yeah. And that's where everything kind of come to a grinding halt, and we decided not to move ahead with the infrastructure portion of that replacement, because we couldn't put any dates on anything. And the biggest concern was, is we didn't have a life expectancy on the pipes that were in the ground. And more than that, we couldn't narrow down a given road segment, say Fair Avenue from Woodbridge to Ontario, we couldn't narrow it down and say when that piece of main was installed, and attach a life expectancy to it, and forecast when that piece of main would need to be replaced.
Okay. I agree. But basically, the board was concerned about the dates of expectancy so that they could look at the dates as a whole, and come up with some levels of funds that would be required. I mean...
Yeah, but it all goes back to the same thing. How much money is it going to take?
Yeah.
When's it going to take?
But, but the detail...
Yeah.
Doesn't do that. The detail, I mean, it's great, and I think you have to have it, but...
30 years, 40 years, 50 years?
Well, but it can be narrowed down even more than that. If you know the expect, how long to expect it to have something function before you have a problem with it, you can look at that, at the bigger picture, and say, how many of those do you have? And then you can begin to say, are we in deep trouble trying to find the money? Or is it something that we could intelligently work towards?
Just like anything else we have, fire truck, or a truck, or whatever, it's the same thing. How long is it going to last? Okay, the pipe in front of my house is going to last 50 years. At around 50 years, you should start planning on do something, because it's going to, within the next 20 years, it's going to fail, so that's what we plan on. When are we going to do it? How much money is it going to cost? And what else in that stretch that we get?
We're not going to get there today, because they don't have that.
They don't have the information. We've got an inventory, you know, but we, I guess we need the structure of what's going to fail, when it's going to fail, and how much do we need, and then you start planning 20 years.
When we expect it to fail.
Well, and that's, that's what Kirk is saying.
If I could jump to wastewater for a second?
Well, just, just like Kirk, and that's what Kirk is saying, basically. The data has been submitted now, and that comes back, the next step that has to be completed by November is to come up with that data.
Oh, okay. No, there's no deadline on the water, okay? If I may. The deadline is for wastewater. And we are doing everything, and for that, we do have consultants.
But there is, but there is a deadline for the board. The board wants that information for budgeting purposes, yeah.
Well, we sure as hell want it before...
Budget?
Well, before budget, but you want it much before you may be replacing some...
Well, that's the whole idea. The whole idea is to identify what your life expectancy is, and start putting that money away this year for something that's going to be coming up 50 years from now, so you have the funds set aside. But then at the same time, the board has to be willing to take a posture and a position that if you've got $5 or $10 million sitting in a future fund, that that doesn't limit you from raising rates. You know, I've heard board members say that. How can we justify raising rates?
Any other means of getting one.
But that's the, that's the point. The point is, is that if you have this kind of a project, it takes this off the, off the page, basically, for capital improvements, because you have an operation and maintenance issue at that point. Capital improvements would then be the only things that fell outside the parameters of what your plan is.
The, the problem has been, and the board's stand on this has been, we don't have the information to make that decision.
And we don't have it to pass on to the taxpayers if we have to go to them.
Yeah, you're not quite there yet. You know, and that's where this data basically now gets put into the next phase of that, is doing those calculations and those projections, so you can start putting dollar amounts in.
So I guess the thing that leaps up is, when is that going to be available?
Could I back up a little?
Sure, go ahead.
So with the water, what Kirk was saying was, the township did receive grant funding to conduct the water asset management. We received that for the sewer with the SAW grant. So I guess Kirk's motivation for doing the water was, hey, we're receiving funds to get these tools, like the data collector, let's do the water as well, which, that makes sense. He hit a deadline where the DEQ was saying, we need, if you have more than 1,000 people on your water system, you must submit this AMP asset management plan. With regard to the water lines, we do have that information, I just pulled it up quickly on the computer, where we know when things were installed. And me and Kirk spent quite a bit of time sitting down, looking at asphalt for both the water and sewer system, establishing when each water line was installed, what material it was made out of. So we have, you know, that basic foundation of knowledge.
And changing soil conditions.
Right. So the difference between the water and the sewer is, you know, we're utilizing StanTech to do many of the condition assessments, and the criticality assessment, which is, which you're alluding to, the critical value of whatever asset there is in the ground, which will assess a monetary cost to each water line, sewer line, whatever. So that's, that's where the difference lies between the water plan and the sewer plan. So with the sewer, that's what StanTech is working on right now, or part of what they're working on, where they assess a, you know, a financial value to each asset, and an estimate of when it needs to be replaced.
And I would think we've just made leaps and bounds if, if we could find out when we're going to get the information for the water. When are we going to get a summary that tells us when we need to start replacing water mains and water valves on this existing system, and what the approximate cost is that going to be, so we can then forecast how much money we need to be raising? So when are we going to get that information?
Well, I really can't promise anything, but like I said, I have to finish the sewer, okay, the wastewater. My plan was to do them since I've got a lot of help on the wastewater. And not so much help, other than Isaac, on the water. So in other words, I don't have financial consultants, I don't have, you know, engineering consultants, asset management consultants. I was hoping to do it at the same time. And the reason being, I wanted to come up with a totally different concept for water than I do for wastewater. So in other words, it's also going to be the same for water and wastewater. But it's critical, more critical, in my opinion, to get the wastewater done, because if it's not complete, then we've got to give the grant money back, you know. So there's 200,000 bucks that we already spent, you know, that we got reimbursed for, that we're going to have to get back.
So what's the dates?
It's the end of November.
It has to be submitted the end of November? So the board will actually see a report on wastewater at the end of November?
Yes.
Or is it just going to be submitted?
Just prior, yeah.
So with that done, when's the water going to be available?
I would hope it would be the same time, but I can't guarantee that.
Well, you know, with the data that you've got here, on this, on this material, I mean, you got the rudiments of the starting, that looks, now that I'm looking at it, it looks like our oldest, our oldest infrastructure in the ground dates from 1973. Is that accurate?
Yep.
Okay, so that's...
We did have older, but that's all I've memorized.
So that's going to be 50 years old in '23. So we should be budgeting for that now.
And have we established a life expectancy for that infrastructure?
No, we have not.
Well, and I think that's, I think that's an issue, because life expectancy, you know, as we've heard, ranges anywhere from 50 to 100 years, but it depends on ground conditions and soil conditions and a variety of things. And right now, our ground is saturated, so I'm sure that's having an impact on what's in the ground. So I think the board needs to identify or establish what you want to use as your life expectancy for the stuff in the ground. You know, 50 years, I think, is reasonable.
The board addressed that a year and something ago, and they settled at 70 years until we got some better information.
Right.
And the only thing, and all the reading I've done about that, the only thing that affects the life expectancy of the pipes in the ground is the alkalinity of the soil.
Right. Which is not changing.
And they've had some testing done on that for pH. Is there that, is it that acidity?
I don't know. Don't know.
Or is it areas where is that acidic?
Don't know.
Well, see, another issue is the ductile iron, which we have now, is a relatively new product. So it's all, I mean, you would look to the manufacturer or, you know, experience. And actually, Dave had forwarded to Randy, and I've already actually been looking at this, and I haven't made the link yet, I haven't actually talked to the people, I've had seminars, there are companies now that are actually promoting, you know, machine learning, artificial intelligence for just this, this, doing this. Because it's difficult with, with water mains, because you can't get inside to look at it.
Well, that's going to be difficult here because of our terrain differences, you know, so like, Trow Bridge is saturated.
But the thing about artificial, sometimes they can collect data from, you know, not just us, I mean, they collect it from us, but they collect it from communities all over the world.
How far have we advanced on putting a life expectancy on the pipes in the ground? Are we any place near that?
No. I mean, I could use that 70 years if that's what you want to use, but...
That's what the board settled with, 70 years, because if you look it up and go to the manufacturer's website, they're calling it 110 years.
Yeah. And it could be, it could be longer. I mean, that's the thing is...
And the only thing they said that would change that is the alkalinity of the soil. That's all they said would change the life expectancy of that pipe was the alkalinity of the soil. And I've been to two or three different sites. Ductile iron is one of them. And they said the alkalinity of the soil. So when you go look up what it takes to test the alkalinity of the soil, you can buy that equipment for less than $2,000 to check the alkalinity of the soil.
But the problem with that, though, is checking the alkalinity, you have to check it constantly, because right now, the alkalinity, alkalinity of the soil in Trow Bridge is totally different today, I would guess, than it was two years ago, because of the water content that's in there now, changes the alkalinity. I mean, we're flooding all over the place with, with held water. So I think, I think that, I think the prudent approach for the board is to take a middle-of-the-road approach in terms of what the, what the minimum and maximum lifecycle is, and that's going to be somewhere between 50 and 70 years to establish a...
And that's how the board came up with 70 years, because it was between 50 and 100.
Plus, it's, it's kind of a dynamic thing. I mean, you could say, okay, a pipe's going to last 70 years. Well, you're not going to spend exactly, or even save exactly the same amount of money, you know, one seventieth per year, okay? As it ages, okay, no... As it ages, okay, no one, the knowledge that we have is going to improve. And secondly, obviously, as it gets close to the end, you're going to be spending more money. So it's not like, okay, you come up with a spreadsheet, you know, just divide the estimated edge of the pipe by, you know.
But to start, wouldn't it seem logical?
Yeah. And that, that could be done.
Wouldn't it seem logical? It, it does to me. My training is electrical engineering. I don't know a damn thing about what they do. But it seems logical to me that if you knew the dates of installation, and then with those dates of installation, make a decision about checking soil alkalinity. Just checking, you, you could kind of direct your attention to another review using that data. You, you could, if you had the date of installation and it looked like it was maybe in jeopardy earlier than many others, if you then were somehow able to check further alkalinity, you'd, it seemed to me like you'd come up with some answers as to where to start. If they can't do the whole thing, they could do part of it.
It seemed like we're jumping back and forth now. I mean, you're, you're asking the life of that pipe and that. I think the first step was, do we have the inventory of what's there and when it was put in? Next step?
That, that's the beginning.
The age of the, the age of the pipe, and you find out what it's good for, fifty to seventy to a hundred years. Okay, then you know your project zone, your timeframe. And then, how much money do we need to do it, correct it, and then do it?
It's a beginning.
But we're jumping back and forth here. You know, you're talking about his inventory, then you go to the life of the pipe, and then we talk about something else. And does he have a complete inventory of all the pipes in the ground when they're installed? Number one.
I understand that you do, right?
Yes. That's what this is.
So the next, the next thing that needs to be determined is the life of the expectancy of the pipe that's in the ground.
Right.
And it's going to change based on what type of pipe was used when it was put in. Do we have all that information?
Or where it is. Is it rocky, is it sand, is it, you know?
Pretty much, yeah. What I don't know for like the original stuff is the class of pipe, which is basically the thickness. So manufacturing has changed over the years, so now they're going with thinner and lighter. Okay, well, basically, we're talking about corrosion. That's the main factor for gumbling pipe.
And there's a big portion of it.
Okay, the more metal you've got, you know, theoretically, all things being equal, it's going to take longer than a, last longer than a thinner pipe.
Well, and I, you know, I guess, and maybe I'm just looking at it too basically, but it seems to me we pulled some of those old pipes out of the ground from time to time. Have we took a look at them and checked how much was left versus how much was there when we put it in the ground?
Right. We did not do that, but that could easily be done. That's what I'm saying.
But you don't know that for the stuff that was put in seventy-three?
Well, the, we, we haven't taken that much out, but apart that we did take out, it looked like there was very little.
It looked real good.
Yeah, right.
Well, and that's what I'm saying. We're talking a four million dollar job in, in Trow Bridge alone, and.
Well, right.
We could be throwing thirty years of the life of that pipe away and going and spending four million dollars if we don't know that we have to.
And the, the thing there, you know, if this is what you want to talk about, that was not an asset management project, okay? You came to me and said, do you have any projects that need to be completed? Because, okay, we want to do everything at the same time. Well, I already had a reliability study, which included lots of things. One of the things was upsizing the transmission portions of Trow Bridge Park.
Up to eight inch.
So up to twelve inches, okay? Well, that doesn't mean this, at the end of us expect life, okay? You asked me if I had a project, I had a project.
How many miles of pipe do we have?
So as we had the opportunity, so what's the opportunity? You're digging up the road? That, that's all it was, Dave.
Well, we dig up the road, you do this.
And right now, we got, we got water main being replaced that's put in in the early nineties because of NDA, okay? They just need to get it out of the way.
Are, are we going to take a look at any of that and see how well it's lasted?
Yes. And I'm sure it's going to be fine. But that doesn't mean we leave it. It, it just depends on the surface. But what we're talking about for asset management is, that's what we should be talking about, not all these other things that we didn't do or, you know, or that did happen.
And I, I'm not trying to talk about the things we didn't do. All I'm saying is, is that we're sitting here waiting for an asset management program. You're saying it's going to be ready in November.
Correct.
But in the interim, I think the board can take some of this information and look at it, and if you're applying that seventy-year, that seventy-year basis, we've got another forty years basically before thirty years. Thirty years before we can replace it.
I guess that would be my next question is if, I mean, the board settled on seventy years because it was, felt to be a conservative estimate, considering it might be as long as a hundred years. Can't we just apply that seventy years to the pipes that are in the ground so that we can get a forecast replacement date on them?
Yeah, I think you can.
And when, and if and when we, we get enough data, whether we do alkalinity tests or whether it's from pulling product out of the ground and, and because it's related to some other replacement, until you get some more data to change that life expectancy, then just go with the seventy years that the board picked a year and a half ago.
So that would mean you've got till two thousand forty-three before you're going to be replacing pump, pipe?
Well, if, if you take all that stuff in the back where it's got the mains, and you just added a seventy-year life expectancy, whatever, to whatever date they were put in the ground.
Yeah.
And you could work all those numbers from there.
Right. The first would be the pipes that were put in in seventy-three and they'd be replaced in forty-three.
Is that correct or?
Well, yeah, that's correct.
In theory?
But the only thing that's.
That'll give you the condition and the remaining life. But, you know, you look at the probability of failure, which is sort of related to the condition.
Yeah.
And the criticality. So that doesn't mean necessarily that, you know, every piece of pipe I'm going to find for seventy years.
I don't think anybody on this board expects that, that every piece of pipe is going to last for seventy years.
So you just want something looking dirty just for like this year?
Well, you want something that's going to look out for twenty years and going to tell us when we need to start replacing the infrastructure that we have.
Well, I'm saying this, this is just the beginning, it's the first step. It's not, it's going to keep evolving. It is going to keep evolving, hopefully, when I leave, so.
Well, I, I guess what I'm suggesting is, is if you took the information we have right here and you added a seventy-year life expectancy to all that pipe, and the rest of those numbers would be right there. Because the only thing we're waiting for is a life expectancy.
Right. And then what that would do would be to give you a basis to determine an annual amount that you wanted to budget towards the replacement of that first segment of pipe, which is going to be coming due in two thousand forty-three.
And that shows us how much pipe is going to be replaced the first year that, that this runs out of life expectancy, how much pipe has to be replaced that year? And how much pipe has to be replaced every year after that? And then it's a budgeting tool. Then you can figure out how much money do we need to gather between now and, and two thousand forty-three?
And that's no different than what we did with the fire department and the mileage question. It's the exact same thing we did. We did a calculation of how much we would need to replace our, our most critical piece of equipment, which at this point is the aerial. And we went and calculated one and a half mils would generate that over six years, basically. And, or, I'm sorry, point six mil over six years. And that being set aside, that doesn't mean that that money is earmarked specifically for that piece of equipment. If something else fails in the interim, we've got that money set in reserve that we don't have to then finance. And I guess that's the same thing we're talking about here. We don't want to be in a position of having to go and apply for funding to the state and wait for a year to get through the process to get the money. But at the same time, the board then still has to be able or willing to take a position that if you've got seven or eight million dollars sitting in a fund, and Kirk, or whoever's in Kirk's seat ten years from now comes to you and says, we need to raise water rates, you're not going to look at that and say, why do we need to raise water rates when we've got eight million dollars sitting in this fund?
I, I don't think anybody would be saying that if we knew what it was going to cost us to, down the road.
But we have had that situation in prior boards. That's why I say you need to establish that that is the board's position going forward with this funding for future debt.
It'll key an action.
Correct. The only thing that's going to change that is if he stipulates that he has to upgrade from eight to ten inches and just like he just did in an area, if it's noted that these pipes should be increased. Is there any other area in the township you feel that you have to go from eight to ten or twelve?
No, outside Trow Bridge, no.
That's what I mean.
Well, and we already know that. We know that a piece of, a segment of one city block in, in Trow Bridge, when it comes time to replace it, we've got to bring it up to the new DEQ standard. If it's two inches bigger in diameter, that's part of the replacement cost. It has to be brought up to that standard.
Yeah, but you're not going to wait till the end. If, if that area grows, you have to do it sooner. Well, but you, but you would have the funds available.
Exactly.
To do it.
Yeah.
That's, then that's the difference. You wouldn't have to be applying for grant funds. You would have funds available already in your replacement fund because you're giving yourself that much cushion.
Right. Well, and part of the process is not only, you know, the sustainability of assets, but it's also the sustainability of your rate structure.
Right.
So it's.
Well, and this goes a long ways to stabilize the rate structure, so you know why you're raising the rates and where that money's going. Right now, and, and we're getting way off the topic now, but right, right now, we've got a couple million dollars sitting in a fund someplace, but it's not earmarked for something specifically. It's just kind of set in their language and collecting point three percent. And we don't have it earmarked for something.
And this is what we're talking about here with earmarking, because you would have it tied to a specific section of aging pipe.
As long as we can take all the money that we have floating around, and we have a portion of it earmarked for an opera, a revenue shortfall, and we have a portion of it earmarked for unbudgeted problems that come up in a year, and we have another portion of it earmarked for projects that are ongoing that come in over budget. And then we have a portion of it budgeted for infrastructure replacement. As long as we have all those things earmarked, the board can do anything it wants with reacting to problems that arise that are outside of the, the conditions that were established. But then the board is making a conscious decision to move money. And that's what the board gets all the big money for, is to make those decisions. But we can't just, that's why everybody goes nuts when you come in with a rate increase, and the first thing the residents say is, you got two and a half million dollars sitting there. What's that for? Well, it's to replace the pipe in the ground someday. But you don't have it earmarked for that. It's not, it's not sitting there in that fund that says that's what it's for.
And that's exactly the situation the city just found themselves in when they had to go three-year increases fifteen percent a year.
Right, and we want to avoid that, right?
That's right. And I think the way you do that is to take this data, apply that seventy-year formula to it, ascribe a dollar amount that each year is allocated to those, to those lines.
It gets that easy. How hard would it be to add seventy years into the life expectancy on all those items?
If we're never rated earmarked for that specifically, then, then future boards are going to know what it's for. It doesn't.
Well, you know, it would be a word what, what it was for.
Well, it's operating, it becomes operation and maintenance funding, basically, it becomes.
And then you have a seventy-year plug in there, and until better information becomes available, then it stays seventy years.
And this is your backup?
I'm sure, I'm sure down the line, seventy years is going to be proven to be a little too conservative, or seventy years is going to say, geez, we could add twenty more years to that because the pipe on the ground is good. So then you just adjust it from there. But I think we need to go with something the board established seventy years a year and a half ago. We should just go with it until better information comes along.
Right. Makes sense.
I agree.
The big thing right now is we have good inventory of all of our stuff in the ground.
And I think this info, it'd really be nice to look at if it had seventy years attached to it, so we could see a whole bunch of numbers. And then, then, I mean, I don't even care about this spreadsheet. All I want to see was, is if you plucked seventy years in there, if, from a board's perspective, I don't think we need any more than the summary as to when, what year do we need to start replacing, and at what cost is that going to, is that going to come? And that's all the board really needs to see. This is nice for supporting documentation, but I don't want to sit here and go through and read all this. I just want the summary at the end that says, in nineteen, or in two thousand forty-three, we're going to have to start replacing two mile of, of water line, and it's going to be eight inch to six inch, and this is going to be the cost. Then you've got something you can budget for.
Well, we do have this, that information is in here for the, the pumping stations.
Yep.
It is.
It's in there for everything except the mains and the hydrants.
So the ultimate thrust behind both of these plans is to establish a monetary figure for the board to have. The whole point of this is to have efficient spending of infrastructure maintenance and.
Yep. So that there's no surprises in twenty years. And I, I guess I wonder about some of those life expectancies that you've got in there. Some of them don't seem to be more than fifteen years.
Yeah, there's some short ones. And those are all mostly mechanical, mechanical wear out type.
Yeah, pumps.
Are those, are those in the ground?
No, no.
Okay. That was going to be my next question. Where would we put a fifteen-year piece of something in the ground when the pipe's good for a hundred?
No, these pumps, they got, you know, they got motors. Actually, we've already replaced the motors on pumps that are like five years old.
So then it actually wouldn't be that hard to plug seventy years in there and get some kind of a report back?
You, you want seventy years, okay, you've got seventy years.
I mean, is that an unreasonable number?
No.
I, and, and I'm not speaking out of turn. The board did decide that, that we would work with seventy years until a better number was available. So seventy years gives us a good idea of when things have to happen, and it may change.
Until we know anything better.
Till you give us better information, seventy's what we're going with. And we'll carry it to our grave.
Nineteen forty-nine, and from there to now, be seventy years.
Twenty forty-nine.
Twenty, yeah.
Twenty forty-nine.
Yeah.
That'd be the oldest, the oldest pipe we have in the ground now, seventy-three.
So we're talking about the water right now.
We're talking about the water. And essentially, the.
From a staff's perspective, the sewer is really the imminent.
I understand that.
Oh, yeah.
But essentially, the, the board is looking for the same information on the sewer. I realize you're, you've got all these bells and whistles for the, for the asset management program for the sewer, but the infant, correct me if I'm wrong, you guys, the, the board's looking for the same summary on the sewer, is when do we have to start replacing it? And at what approximate cost are we going to have to start doing that at? And I realize that, you know, DEQ says you have to have all this stuff done, and you've got to do it according to their bells and whistles that they want on it, but the bottom line is.
Well, the rest of the bells and whistles, that's something that we like to do with, with some of the communities, like the city market, for example. And the advantage of those bells and whistles is it takes it down to the level of people in the field. So you've got good record keeping, you know what happened, when it happened.
Yep.
Okay. That's not happening, and that's crucial to the whole thing.
I understand that. And all that, all that does from, from the board's perspective, certainly from my perspective, is it tweaks the numbers on when you have to look on replacing it.
I'm just speaking as the manager of these systems, okay? You've got, it's not just me, but you've got a lot of the knowledge that's going to be walking out that door.
Right.
You know, so I don't, you know, you're going to get these spreadsheets, okay? You're going to get your numbers, but I need other people that are going to be able to carry this on. And I'm not talking necessarily just my replacement, although hopefully he will, well, he's going to have to, carry on, but the people actually doing the work out in the field.
Yeah, but I think you're talking about two different things. The board is talking about the fiscal aspect of it, and you're talking about the operational aspect. So I mean, from, from the board's perspective, what I'm hearing the board saying is, is that they, they need to have a projection of how much money you're going to need by two thousand forty-three to replace however many sections of pipe was installed in nineteen seventy-three, so they can start budgeting, they can start allocating funds next year to, to get to it. You know, your, your side is a valuable side. You know, you've got potentially three people currently in the, in the system that have the majority of the knowledge of the system. And Isaac and I talked about this, this data gathering process that you guys have been involved in in about the last two years has involved a lot of the staff members that didn't have the knowledge back at the time these things were done, that are now gaining that knowledge. They're now gaining that knowledge. So there's kind of, there's an educational aspect of this as well because they were doing the inventory. They were going out and doing actually the measurements and collecting this data. You know, we've got, we've got three, uh, very senior, let's put it that way, very senior members of the staff that probably over the next two years are going to be leaving the township with regard to the the public works department. And, you know, they're going to have to be replaced by folks. But we're trying to bring, along with this whole process, we're doing this, bring some of the other staff into that knowledge base as well in terms of what was installed, where it's at, how old it is, uh, to be involved in that.
Well, I don't mean to sound callous, but once you have all this information down in an asset management program and it's well documented, then the the least experienced guy has that information available to him.
Available, correct.
Right, if we do the bells and whistles.
Right. I'm not, I'm not suggesting you don't need the bells and whistles. I'm saying the board doesn't need the bells and whistles.
I get that. I'm just talking about asset management, of which human beings are part of asset management. All I think this system would last if there was nobody here.
Yeah, the asset management is on the side of staff. I mean, that's, asset management is your your baby, basically. The financing of it is on this side, on the board's side. And that's what, that's all the board is saying is, is that give us, give us a projection of when we're going to have to face as a as a community replacing those lines that were installed in nineteen seventy-three so we can start allocating funds into appropriate line items to be prepared to address that when it happens. Or whoever our predecessor is forty years from now, thirty years or forty years from now, whenever that comes up. So we're talking about two different, two different things, and that's.
Well, when we get, when we get done with, the thing we're working on next here was the definitions for some of these funds. And we get done determining how much money needs to be in those funds, then you can take a look at any of those unfunded balances that are left and decide where the most appropriate place is to move those. And is it more appropriate to move it into a capital expense program? Or is it more appropriate to move it into an infrastructure replacement program? Does that just give us a leg up? But you need all that information we're talking about today just to get to that point so you can make a decision.
Yeah, and that's where the city of Marquette found themselves, what, twenty years ago? They still had wooden mains in the ground that were over a hundred years old. Nobody was seeing anything for them. They had to be replaced right now. They didn't have the money, you know, so.
Well, we don't, we don't want to find ourselves in the city of Marquette situation. Or who's the last one, Ishpa Meeg or Nagani that found they had?
Yeah, Ishpa, that's even worse.
Yeah, it's even worse.
We just don't want to find ourselves. And the only way we can stay out of that is some of the planning we're talking about right now.
So it looks like right now you've got about forty-three years before you can expect, based on that seventy year life expectancy, you can expect that nineteen seventy-three lines that were installed to be needing to be replaced. So if it's, if it's in fact, say again?
Well, I'll just say twenty-four years from now total.
Well, you're going to be going seventy years on seventy-three, so that takes it out to forty-three. So yeah, another twenty-three years.
Forty-three.
Twenty-two years.
Twenty forty-three.
Yeah, twenty forty-three.
Twenty-four years till that day.
Correct.
We, when we get the information, then we'll know how much time we have before we need to draw the money to get ready for it. And we know, we know we can't do it all in one time. So.
But right now.
We don't have a handle on when we need to start having money put.
Well, I I think this board could consider themselves a roaring success if in two thousand forty-three arrives and we've got to replace two miles of infrastructure, that the money is already set in a fund to do that with.
At least a portion of it.
So that we don't have to borrow any of it.
Right, and that's the whole concept.
And you'll back up from forty-three to where we are, when we need the money and how we need to get it.
And I think when you start, I mean, the first piece is going to be two thousand forty-three, but then it stumps fairly rapidly after that because we did a lot of infrastructure for, in a very few short years there. So we're going to, you need to take a look at that whole stretch.
Correct.
And I I don't think having the money for the two thousand forty-three infrastructure plant replacement is going to be the issue. But having it for ten years later, when we're, because in the middle seventies and early eighties, if you remember Kirk, we were in high gear with infrastructure, aren't we?
Oh, yeah, into the nineties, and we still are.
So so once it starts being replaced, it's going to be going at nearly the same rate for replacement.
In fact, you, we discussed how complete is the inventory. It's already outdated because we've already replaced some of the stuff that's in here.
Right.
Just in the last couple of weeks, we replaced that whole bunch of.
Updated.
What's the life expectancy of the sewer lines?
That's a different story. That's what's happening right now.
That's something we've got to think about, too.
That's what we're currently conducting.
Different setup.
So in the last year, um, through the SOG grant funds contracted out, televising of all the grab these sewer to the fullest extent they could be televised, to get a camera through there, um, which denotes where there are, where there's damage on the inside of the sewer pipe, which can be geocoded and referenced in the future for, I mean, where we have incidences of damage, which is really cool. I wish you could do that with water lines, but you just can't. And then along with that, condition assessments of all the two hundred and seventy-two manholes on the gravity line. So we're in the process of doing that. It's going to be more, much more complete. It's going to be fully complete by the end of the SOG grant life cycle, which is in November.
You know, and life expectancy on those lines is different than the life expectancy on the water. It's a comparison of them.
So they're going to use that televising to produce a condition assessment and then criticality factor of when and how much it's going to cost to replace everything?
So we have some kind of an idea anyhow.
It's going to have a really, really good idea of what's to happen.
That's with STANTEC right now. The data's been submitted to STANTEC. We'll wait for a response back from them, the criticality factors of the cost.
If the city got two hundred years out of wood, I can only imagine, or a hundred years or whatever out of wood, we should be able to get half of that out of what we got in the ground.
What do we think?
Kirk, I've got a question. Can you give us the life of a sewer, water, grinders, meters, and water tanks? Everything that are in our agenda? Is that in here?
Yeah.
Yeah, the only thing, if I read this right, the only thing that doesn't have, uh, life expectancy on it is hydrants and mains, right?
Right, yeah.
Everything else is.
The water reservoirs, basically, they can really go a long time because typically, you know, I haven't inspected every five years. Okay, based on that inspection, we'll, we'll get a five year forecast with cost of what's going to be done. So typically, you'll start out with paint, and it's painted. Okay, and then maybe the first thing you do, you inspect it five years and, okay, you're going to need cathodic protection in X number of years. And then, so you do that, that's a cost. So that's, that's a bit more defined. But that can be pretty much a long time. A couple hundred years, easy, if you keep up with that process, which we have been, so.
And what's the life of a grinder?
That's.
Which one, eh?
Guns about residents.
Right, yeah. I mean, we haven't actually looked at that part yet, but it's, uh, you know, fifteen, twenty years would be the max.
As I look at it, I just see grinder repair, grinder, grinder, grinder. And I'm just thinking, do we have the best out there that, is there a better one out there that instead of replacing and putting parts on?
In our application, it's the best one.
Is it? Okay.
Yep.
I think we just, did we just change that, the supplier of those? And we started getting different pumps?
No.
No?
You talked about.
Early on, they were, uh, basically, we get ours out of a distributor in out of Plymouth. Well, initially, for the project, we got them directly from the factory. And then the Michigan distributor was out of Plymouth.
I thought there were some that we couldn't get parts for anymore.
No, we still get parts.
Can you?
But a couple of times, they, it's just like any company that distributes stuff, they'll change. The UP is kind of, okay, out there, and it's like nobody wants it. So they actually switched us, the factory did, to, uh, I think Minnesota was one place, maybe even Wisconsin. And we always ended up back because those vendors could not really handle it. You know, I think it's almost like there were guys using it on the garage or something, so.
So where the the operations and maintenance plays into things like grinder pumps especially is it's going to allow for better tracking of what parts are being replaced within each grinder pump?
Well, it'll give you a whole lot better idea on budget, what you need to set aside for that.
How many grinder pumps do we have in the system?
Four hundred.
Over four hundred.
Over four hundred.
I have the number off the top of my head.
It's over four hundred.
They have collectible locations though.
Yeah, locations we do have.
Kirk, how many miles of pipe do we have out there as far as sewer and water? Do you have any?
I'd say.
Sewer and water?
Yeah, yeah, how many, how many, how many miles of water do we have? How many miles of sewer do we have?
I believe it's about seventy thousand linear feet of water. Sixty-six thousand linear feet of gravity sewer, about fifty thousand of forced main for sewer.
I'll get that after we.
No, that's a hundred miles, fifty thousand.
So again, we have a lot of assets. The initial step was cataloging them, then assessing them, and then maintaining that catalog so that we don't have to go through this process in the near future. It's just going to be rolling and well maintained.
Right.
Anybody got anything else?
Well, what, what, what's the consensus? What do you want them to come up with first? Like I said before, we have all the wins and butts.
Well, I think it goes without saying that we need to press on with the wastewater.
If that's done.
That, that we've got a deadline. For the grant, other than that, we've got to cough up a couple hundred thousand dollars.
But at the same time, we've got the basic information for water. If you're applying the seventy year lifespan.
Right.
We can come up with, we can come up with a ballpark of what that cost might be for two thousand twenty-three or forty-three. Uh, so twenty-four years, roughly twenty-four years from now, twenty-five, about twenty-five years from now. If it's three million dollars, what do you have to do each year for twenty-five years to get to an estimated three million, anticipating about a one and a half percent a year inflation rate?
So that's that, huh?
That's that.
Shall we adjourn?
Yeah.
We're adjourned.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yeah.
Adjourned at two oh nine.
There you go.
Now, let me just see the consensus. You think that the next meeting, if we had a table there, it'd be more comfortable for them?
Yes, absolutely.
It's got to be taller tables for you.
We'll just cut this off. I mean, when you stand up there, you know, sometimes it's not very comfortable.
We can just get them a table with a trapdoor under it so we don't like the answers. We can just punch a button.
Yeah.
What's that?
Round table would be nice.
Well, we're just, we're just saying that we took this table and just put it out there.
So you can sit down and look at your papers. Oh, and it's hard to have a life expectancy, eh? A, a, life expectancy of a grinder because you're placing parts all the time. So what do you do, start adding another ten years on or something like that? What about meters? How long meter?
Just to go down and replace them.
Are we all done with them? Meters, no?
But we're able to give all target locations to the fire department.
Do we got my neighbor there?
Actually, all the name their emergency response system. If we didn't change the whole meter and that, we're able to change the register.
Except for my neighbor in Brunswick, I don't know if he got into his house or.
We actually know where to start digging in the snow.
I'm ready crossing my house. This is pretty cool.
No, it's, it is nice to have that. I can imagine.
I think. Actually, we've got to get into every house again before the end of the year. There's nothing we have to do.
Water is the most important.
There's this big lid copper concern now. So we have to, uh, verify the. Service materials from the main all the way to. We're pretty sure what we got, but we'll just call it a meter inspection, whatever.
Yeah, why, why would I be getting a red ring on my toilet?
A red ring.
Get it out sometimes around my tub and then on my toilet.
Well, normally, it would be like iron, but you get city water.
That's what I mean.
Action to what? Ask retire next week.
Marilyn asked me today, she, dude, you don't get the red ring around you. Upstairs, downstairs in the town and stuff like that, I don't know. She said, should we be drinking? Oh, for crying out loud, we've got the best water around.
Don't drink it out of your toilet.
They're, oh, they could, I want to use that one, Kirk. Marilyn, don't drink it out of the toilet. I had my head close to it though. Hey, Dan, I had my head close to it that time.
Just contributing to it though.
I thought if we could catch it. Actually, you or I could look at it.
Well, still know where the pipe is. You know, the city. They shouldn't have iron in the water, but. They might have, still have a few old hills.
Okay.
Old cast iron. After wood.
It's all peaceful.
They are still replacing stuff.
Oh, and in the east side, they still got wood up there. I don't think we got it all. And they replaced all the superior hills because they had all the orange, orange berg up there.
Oh, that's a sewer, yeah.
Yeah, but it's just, every time I read the, the articles in that, uh, pummy book, what the hell, you get that? Sometimes they vary the, a hundred years down and they go back up and they're all these tests. If we had that, if we had that, the dates of the life expectancy, they'll give more kind of, Kirk, it's a money. I don't think, Kirk, I don't give a shit, I won't be here. Isaac, I want those numbers that you give me after, if you go in the auto, walk in, mark it down.
Mr. Mark. Have a good evening.
Well done. Just, that's the role we have to play.
That was down at, interesting planning commission meeting.
That was bad.
We stopped this.